Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield Town Council meeting of Monday, February 12. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is attendance. Joined in studio by five of my fellow colleagues. Sherri, do we have Counselor Smith Galvin online yet?
Well, there is a Julie online that I've been trying to promote over, but she keeps declining, so I'm not sure if it's... It just says Julie.
Okay.
And I'm assuming it was Julie Smith Galvin, but I don't know.
Okay. I know we're expecting Counselor Smith Galvin to join us remotely soon, so hopefully we'll see her shortly. Item number four is an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation under General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, because an open session may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the town with the intent of returning to open session immediately thereafter. Do I have a motion to open executive session?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Vice Chair McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Aye.
And do we have Julie yet?
She said she's in the waiting room.
No, now she is on our side. Her camera's not on.
Okay.
Oh, no, this is Julie Scott, actually.
All right, so I will...
She might be on the executive session.
Okay.
Some length that we should say.
So I will vote yes for executive session, so that motion carries 6-0. So we will enter into executive session. We will return to open session immediately afterwards. We expect around 7:00. I have exited executive session and returned to open session. Just for the record, Counselor Smith Galvin, who was with us for executive session, has departed the meeting. We'll move on to item number five, public engagement. I have two people signed up, starting with Cindy Schatz. Cindy Schatz, if you wouldn't mind taking a seat at the microphone. And I'll ask you if you can introduce yourself with your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. I'll read fast, I have a couple paragraphs, I haven't had a chance to time myself. I'm Cindy Schatz, Eight Quarters Street, Wakefield. I'm here as a neighbor of the herd and as a friend of the library. As a neighbor of the herd for over 30 years, I attended both of the open community meetings held on 9/13/2016 and 6/2018, after which we've heard just about nothing regarding the future of that building. I've watched the town deteriorate from both the inside and the outside during the past four or five years, which I find to be a very sad state of affairs. I'd like to see a combination of both cultural use and residential use there, artist studios and your condos, which could bring in some income on the upper floors, and community nonprofit use on the main levels, maybe municipal storage on the lower level. I understand that Linden Tree is looking for new space for their monthly music performances, and the Sweets or Lectures may be looking for a more appropriate venue for their talks. And now, speaking as a chair of the Friends of the Library's book sale, I don't understand why the library doesn't have included in its town budget the cost of programming. It's kind of like buying computers but not buying the software. It's an essential part of library services is programming. All or nearly all of the program funding comes from the Friends. The Friends donated over $93,000 to the library during 2021, 22, and 23, and the book sale, which has multiple aspects, brought in over $50,000 in gross revenue during those same three years. Town council had a meeting on June 5th last year, and according to its minutes, discussed priorities for the ensuing year, including the Herd School on Butler Avenue and the possibility of utilizing the second floor of the senior center for the Friends of the Library. However, neither the president of the Friends nor the chairs of the book sale, of which I'm one, were alerted to this either shortly before or after this meeting. We weren't consulted before being included in the potential uses for the senior center, which is on page 33 of the report that you have tonight, nor were we consulted about being excluded from the potential uses of the Herd School, which is on page 25 of the report, and we've been in there since late 2019. We can certainly inform the town about many of those potential uses which are listed for the herd that are not going to be appropriate unless tens of thousands of dollars are spent to upgrade and repair the herd first. Personally, I think the repurposing of the buildings needs to be a more open process, that the potential uses of the buildings being discussed tonight should be part of a master plan study conducted with community input before decisions are being made. It just seems to me like the decision-making regarding the buildings in this town could benefit from more input that's really taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schatz, appreciate it. We do have a second public comment, actually a written public comment, from Christine Carrato at 4 William Street. Christine comments that the Butler Ave property should have the house removed, as it has been years sitting vacant. It is an eyesore and attacks vandalism and trespassers, which is a public safety hazard. I don't believe, Sherri, that Ms. Carrato is on or plan to speak live.
I do not see her on, no.
Okay, great. And do we have anyone else for public engagement?
Yes, we do.
Great.
We do have Julie Scott. WCIT, I need to be host, please. Julie is coming.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Hi, Julie, you're on mute. Okay, you're good. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Ready to go?
Go ahead, Ms. Scott.
Thank you. My name's Julie Scott, I live at 4 Central Street. On your agenda, I see that there is a Springtown Meeting warrant article that's establishing an overlay district, a marijuana overlay district in the Autobahn Road area. I ask for public informational meetings to be held in the future, as I would like to hear from my local police department and leaders, as well as the Board of Health officials, about this issue prior to attending a Springtown meeting. Also on your agenda is a town meeting warrant article addressing a self-storage overlay district to be placed along Lakeside Cornepawett Parkway areas. This will be directly connected with the work that we are doing to better our lakeside areas and the planning that we've been putting in for the past 10 years or so will be affected by this overlay district. So I would like some information, some panels and information to come from the town as well in regard to that. I hope that our town leaders provide an informational forum about that potential development. Along with the Planning Board's MBTA overlay district article, I know we can all look forward to a robust public and town meeting discussion on these topics, and I hope residents will attend tomorrow night's 7:15 Zoom meeting put on by the Planning Board in regard to the MBTA 3A multifamily zoning overlay district. But of particular interest to me is item seven on your agenda. I remember over 13 years ago, Phil McCarty reached out to many in regard to designing the Savings Bank Theater at the Wakefield Memorial High School. Great people joined with the Savings Bank, and lots of town individuals came together and formed a committee to figure out how to build the Savings Bank Theater within the confines of our memorial high school. I look at Agenda Item 7 tonight, and I'm wondering if this past success can be used as a model for what is contained within your Agenda Item 7. Could a committee be formed to discuss and design future usage options for the public areas contained in tonight's Item 7? I live in the Herd School neighborhood, and in the past I have attended meetings about the potential future uses of that building. And during last year's April election, I was interested to see that some older residents were asking a very valid question. What additional services are available to us as seniors seven days a week, and what use of spaces are available for us seven days a week that would be catering to older folks being added to enhance the lives of Wakefield's over-55 population? Is the limited senior space center continuing to be enough? Is the location convenient to reach from all corners of our community? But speaking as an individual member of the Master Plan Advisory Group, I know that we, as a committee, discussed a number of these buildings in Item 7. The master plan to be used as a townwide roadmap moving forward unfortunately is not yet complete. I did read through the first draft again today, but I didn't see references to some of our important discussions, and I hope to see these references will be included in the next draft that we're still waiting to see. Members of the Master Plan Advisory Group had a lot of ideas for the usage of buildings under town ownership. The discussions tonight should lead to asking for public input. Please look for ways that we all can come together to generate ideas as to how best use these buildings and town areas in ways that enhance the quality of life and the character of our community. I know that community and volunteer groups have not been brought in to discuss anything involving their needs and how maybe the Herd or the Warren Schools or even 5 Common Street could meet town needs. The post office on Main Street...
Ms. Scott, if you wouldn't mind wrapping it up, we're over three minutes.
Donovan, I know, I'm sorry. About 30 seconds at most. The post office on Main Street, like many post offices across the country, will continue to downsize, and they're probably going to be looking to rent storefront space. The building will be vacated. Is there a need presented by our Department of Public Works that could be met if town leaders looked into acquiring that historical and most beautiful building from our federal government? Would this building be suitable to serve our community as part of what is needed to house our Department of Public Works facilities in the future? I ask you tonight when discussing Item 7 to look for ways to bring the thoughts of many to a common table. I know that there are volunteers and groups waiting to be asked. Asking for direct input from the community is the best way to move forward on tonight's Agenda Number 7. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for reference, you mentioned the two citizen petition town meeting articles. So those are actually not town proposals, they are citizen petitions.
Right.
Our role tonight is to refer those to the Planning Board for public hearing, so there will be a hearing through the Planning Board on both of those as required by charter.
And I look forward to more public input after that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Sherri, anyone else for public engagement?
Nobody else for public engagement, but WCIT, I still need to be host, please.
Great. All right, we'll move on to item number six, fiscal year 2025 budgets. So Mr. Gill, if you wouldn't mind joining us. We've got three discrete departments today. Steve, before we get into each individual department, do you have any overarching thoughts to share?
No, I think that Kevin's done a great job, and we can jump right into him and answer your questions.
Great. So we'll start with Item 6A, Information Technology Budget, and Sherri, is Mr. Cusack with us as well? There he is.
Yes, he is. Hi, Brian.
Howdy. Can y'all hear me?
We can, thank you, Brian. Kevin and Todd, we'll let you kick it off.
I'm not sure if we want to hear from the Subcommittee first before I do a budget overview either way.
Let's do the budget overview, and then, Brian, if it's okay, I'll ask you for comments once we get the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Town Council members. The Information Technology Budget for fiscal '25, we're recommending an increase of $14,098 over the current fiscal year. There is a decrease in personal services, $7,397, but there are contractual and negotiated salary increases included. The reason for this reduction is an increase in the enterprise fund offset. The Municipal Light Department has increased or has asked for additional support that we calculated at $30,000, of which $13,000 is going to be used for salary increases. If you see on page five of the budget, there are an increase to Todd's salary of $8,000 into David Driscoll's $5,000 to handle the additional support. The balance of $17,000 is what was used to help create the decrease overall in the salary line item. Under contractual services, there's an increase of $13,698. Software maintenance has increased $16,798, which includes the yearly price increases and some additional software that needs support. The training line item has increased $800, and the travel line item actually decreased $3,900. We moved a lot of those expenses down to materials and supplies. Materials and supplies overall has increased $6,630. There's a new motor vehicle parts and supply line item for $5,880, and this is used for upkeep for the two departmental vehicles used by IT. The total budget request for fiscal '25 is $493,253.
Great. Todd, anything you want to add?
No, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Great. Mr. Cusack, any comments from the Finance Committee?
Sure. So a couple of things. We talked about the potential risk in burgeoning salaries that are currently covered by those overlay or by the enterprise account in the schools. And Todd made a great point, which is that the services that the IT department is providing to those two entities are dramatically less expensive as they're provided by the IT department than they would be if they had to go on the open market. So it seems like we're in pretty good shape there in terms of continuing to reap the benefits from an IT budget perspective of those chargebacks. So that's terrific. We talked a little bit about the IT insurance policy, the IT security insurance policy, and Todd stated that the town is compliant with the requirements of the policy, so that the committee was happy about that. Software maintenance definitely continues to be a concern, as that has gone up 10% this year. And Todd made another great point, which is that basically they have us over a barrel because, you know, we use the software, it's very much part of what the town does, and in spite of that, Todd's still been able to come in with a budget that only goes up by, I think, 3.5% or something like that, 2.94%, actually. So, you know, he's done a great job. We had all of our questions answered. We did talk also, just really quickly, about the fact that we're not using the Office 365 budget at this time, because we haven't, as I understand it, as a town yet started to use those licenses. It's in the budget for $70,000. Of course, if it's not used in this fiscal year, it'll revert back to the town. And we also talked about the need that we will have in the near future to upgrade some of the PCs that the IT department is responsible for because of the fact that Windows 10 will go end of life in late 2025, and some of those laptops and desktops can't run Windows 11. So there's some capital considerations upcoming in the near future. Overall, great job, is our opinion.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cusack. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this presentation. Good evening. Todd, as well. One question for you, Kevin, about do the memberships, is that the Office 365 that's explaining why it's gone up like so dramatically?
Yes.
Okay. And we're expecting that will be about where we land on that going forward each year with potential increases?
Yeah, that will go up each year as Microsoft increases their rates.
And prior to that being under this, because if you go back like historically, obviously '22 was only like a couple thousand dollars, now it's like, you know, 79 or thereabouts. Prior to that, I'm sorry if I missed this, where did that expenditure fall?
That would be in capital. So we outright own the software, and then you have to maintain that and perform upgrades.
And do you have a sense of kind of like how that compares to, you know, like what the capital investment was versus now and ongoing operating?
Yeah, well, Microsoft's making it so that they want everyone to go towards online. So they're making it more expensive to actually maintain it on property.
Okay. Kevin, do we have any sense historically of what that would have been when it was capital? Like, is it... Or is the magnitude, are we in the same ballpark in terms of when we would have to purchase it and then you'll kind of maintain it on an annual basis?
The actual hardware itself?
Yeah.
What's the hardware and the software cost? So software and all the licensing. We'd have to go back and take a look at what we've paid in the past, but it's what it is now to remain current, it's almost more expensive to keep it in-house.
I guess that's what I'm getting at. I mean, I feel like from a reliable, like Office 365, like this with the licenses is pretty much how it's all going. I totally get that. But I was curious to kind of to know what we're looking at in terms of, was it much more before, and now are we... It's cost savings, it sounds like it's probably close to breakeven with expected increases, obviously.
Yeah, I could send you over the actual numbers.
That would be helpful. And then the other piece is just from a ransomware cybersecurity standpoint, and I know we've actually had meetings on this in the past, so I'm not looking to talk about anything too publicly about, you know, how strong we are, and I'll say the town is very strong, so don't try us. But any other ways in which, in an ideal world, there were certain, there could be certain expenditures that you would, you know, be interested in pursuing without getting into detail, but, you know, are there certain other ways in which you think we could shore up things better?
There's always ways to shore up things, yeah. And there's actually more grants coming out, so some that were just announced this weekend, we'll be applying for those and try and fund everything through grants.
I think just from a priority standpoint, and I'm seeing it regularly, even, you know, looking at a lot of different industries, that that seems to be one of the biggest threats that any organization has. And so to the extent that we can make that one of the top priorities going forward, I think that would be really important.
Oh, absolutely.
To serve our purposes. I'm not saying it's on your radar, of course it is, but, you know, any and every way that we could do, you know, have those redundancies, have that protection, I think it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Butt?
Todd, can you just give us an update on how all the hybrid, like, spaces? Are we complete with that project?
Yeah, the only thing we have left is documentation that's finishing up this week.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
I will say, I was in one of the Town Hall conference rooms last Monday, and we used the system on the fly, and it was surprisingly easy to use. So I already had kind of an unexpected chance to test it out, and it worked very well. So appreciate the work that's gone into that. Just a couple of questions, if I may add some. So Office 365, we haven't implemented yet. Do you have a sense of the timing of that implementation? It sounds like it will be fiscal '25 versus '24, or is it still on the fence in terms of when we're ready to move ahead?
Yeah, it's still on the fence. We just finished a major Munis upgrade.
Okay.
So we're getting ready to take that one on next. If it comes close, it kind of doesn't make a difference if we come in June 30th or July 1st, because then you're going to have a renewal the following June 30th. So the budget request would still be the same.
Okay.
But if it does roll into July, then, yeah, we have this year's funds being returned, next year's budget being the first year.
Okay. And can you talk a little bit about the PC refresh? So, and this is something I can't recall, you know, what we sort of looked at in terms of capital, but do we have a certain kind of schedule or kind of life cycle for PCs within the town where we're refreshing a certain number each year? Are we doing this sort of on the fly as an ad hoc capital request, or give us a little detail on sort of how that plays out on a year-over-year basis?
Yeah, it's been capital request in the past, and what we've done is basically building by building, like, we might do all the public safety machines at one time, and then we'll do all the Town Hall machines. We try and run them as long as we can, as long as they're still functional and performing well for everyone, and that's what we're seeing where we're coming up with. One group of those aren't going to be compatible with Windows 11, but some of the other existing ones are.
Okay. But you are doing basically a building or a department each year, so where we are kind of, we've got a reasonable kind of life cycle or process in terms of...
If it's not annually, it's every few years.
Okay.
But yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? No? Seeing none, then I will take a motion to approve the Information Technology Budget for fiscal year 2025 as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bowden and Mr. Cusack, thank you for joining us, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you all.
And we'll move on to Item 6B, Police Department Budget. So Chief Scori, and I don't believe we have a FinCom liaison.
The FinCom liaison is under the weather, but he did want me to express his thanks to Chief Scori and Deputy Chief Calabresi for spending a lot of time with him and the Subcommittee and walking them through the whole budget and even some other operational items that they had questions on. So thank you from Mr. Blueberry.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick overview of the police budget. We're recommending the police budget for next year be increased $357,477 over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down under personal services. The increase is $343,977. This covers the police union contract that was settled back in November, so those costs are reflected in the fiscal '25 budget. Under contractual services, there was a $13,500 increase. Three accounts were increased, auto maintenance, radio maintenance, and computer maintenance. Basically, all three due to increased costs from the vendors. The computer maintenance, as you recall, last year, we put in the money for the body cameras. Materials and supplies have been level funded. The total budget request for fiscal '25 is $7,514,617.
Great. Thank you. Chief Scori, anything you'd want to add before we open it up for discussion?
Kevin was pretty inclusive there. I can give more detail on specific line items if anybody wishes.
Any questions then or comments from the council? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair James. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Chief, I just want to thank you for spending the time in your office, going through the budget, answering all my questions. Absolutely. The one question I did have for you here is, you're currently manned with 46 officers?
We are budgeted for 47.
Budgeted 47, and you currently have...
So far this fiscal year, we had one individual graduate the academy in August, we had two more graduate in October, and we have one individual who's scheduled to start a police academy April 1st. So when you look at this fiscal year, we've actually, for the first third of the fiscal year, the first quarter, rather, we operated four people short. For the first half of the year, the fiscal year, we've operated three people short, and now we're one person short.
All right, thanks for clarifying that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, for this thoughtful budget. And going through, I know, especially in recent years, recruitment has been a real challenge. I know you've reported to us each year. How are we looking today versus, say, '22, '23?
Not much better.
Really?
To be honest, yes. So our current civil service eligibility list has 27 names on it. Just to give you a quick idea, the last time that we called for that civil service list, there were only nine people who signed the list and showed an interest in being hired by us. And, excuse me, we went through the list, we hired the person who was number one in that list. So the problem becomes, some of those people will get scooped by the police departments. There are a lot of non-civil service police departments, and they're conducting their own hiring programs, so we will lose some of our eligible candidates to other cities and towns, and to the state police as well. So it's difficult hiring people, it's a lengthy process, just to give you an idea of how long it takes to actually hire somebody. When we call for the civil service list, they have a week to sign, then we have a month to do a background check. And the time we call for that civil service list to the time we actually put a police officer on the street is about a year.
And looking at that, because I firmly believe we have just a top-rate department, I mean, we are just the cream of the crop, and I think the end of a lot of other communities. What do you think in an ideal world we could do differently to try to really encourage recruitment and stand out from some of the communities? You know, what are you hearing are the real drivers of decision-making for where people end up landing?
A lot of police departments are removing themselves from civil service, and the reason being because that way they can go to colleges, they can do recruitment. When you're a civil service community, you're relying on your residents to take that exam, and you just, sometimes you get the interest, sometimes you don't. I'll tell you that with civil service departments, a lot of these towns, they don't have anybody taking their exam. You just, sometimes you get the interest, sometimes you don't. I'll tell you that with civil service departments, a lot of these towns, they don't have anybody taking their exam. So the towns are removing themselves. Some of the colleges like Merrimack College, Fitchburg State University, they have programs now where you can get your master's degree and the police academy at the same time. So you graduate ready to go to work, and they're getting scooped up right away by by non-civil service departments. There is a bill at the State House scheduled to be voted on uh February twenty-sixth, and what it will do is it'll amend the hiring process. The civil service agency so we can hire fifty percent from our civil service list and fifty percent from uh not being on the civil service list. What that allow us to do is it allow us to go to places like Merrimack, Salem State Colleges, and start a recruiting process, give our own exam, and we'll be able to hire fifty percent of our people from the non-civil service list.
That that's really insightful. Thank you for that. And then just just finally, um, I I feel like every year the job becomes more difficult for a number of reasons, but here in Wakefield specifically, as we continue to see, you know, development and rapid development at times. You know, just we have this population growth and and that just places more demands on the department. Are you comfortable with the staffing levels you have now to be able to meet the what I would say is the growing human demand?
When we look at the construction that's happening around town, there's a list of projects that are on tap, and I think I have it figured out that there'll be about an additional twelve hundred. Living units within the next two years, and I will be here asking for more personnel. I am budgeted for the forty-seven. It's tough to stay at the forty-seven. I don't think we've been at forty-seven in maybe ten years. So to keep up with the demand, we'll have to be budgeted for forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, expecting to be around the forty-seven number realistically. In the next three years, we have nine people that are eligible to retire. That can be problematic if uh we have retirements, we have what we call, I like to call the X-factor. You have people that leave to go to other departments. Uh, a lot of people go to the state police because they have more toys, more more things to do there. What I say, I laugh when I say it because we had one great officer who who always wanted to be helicopter pilot. We don't have helicopters. He left to go to the state police. He's now in charge of their air wing, so God bless him. He got what he wanted, but um. So some departments have more to offer. Uh, we have people that leave to go to the private sector. Some people, this job, they find it's just not for them, and they they choose to go do something else. So when you look at the X-factor, you look at retirements, I know at least nine, maybe more. So I think what's really important is that is we know these retirements are coming up, that we get a jumpstart on the hiring process. And hopefully get somebody into the into a police academy to replace them before they're actually gone. Because like I said, it takes a year from the day we start the hiring process until the day they actually drive a police car by themselves.
I'm just really concerned about that. I think I'm glad to hear that you're being so proactive about it because, I mean, it's 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 a a top priority from my perspective, from a public safety standpoint, that we have the people power to be able to. Handle how, you know, our residents, you know, and whatever increases we may have in terms of population.
And and I think it's important, too, to keep the staffing up because we don't want to go so shorthanded that our officers that that are here are overworked. We don't want them getting tired. We want them to stay healthy. There's there's a big focus now on officer well-being, and part of that is making sure that they're not overworked. We have a lot of officers that they'll work the extra hours, but when you get into the business of forcing people to stay for double shifts, that becomes a problem. So I just want to make sure that we we have a healthy enough staff, enough people on our staff that we don't run into that.
And we have the overtime concerns, too, in addition to that.
There is an effect on overtime.
Right, overtime.
You know, when we look at the numbers that we've already used for this year, that's a reflection of the fact that for most of the year, we've been three or four people short.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, any other comments from the council? I can just ask, following up on the the civil service question. You know, I I was going to ask, you know, do you have an opinion in terms of, you know, Wakefield being a civil service department versus opting out of civil service? It sounds like, though, if I'm just kind of reading between the lines of your comments, that, you know, if we do have the flexibility to go off-list for fifty percent, that you'd look at that as a a good thing that would help us. Effectively sort of obviate the decision around, are you civil service or not?
I see it as a very good thing.
Okay.
There are some good candidates on the civil service list, don't get me wrong. Uh, the problem is civil service rules. When I call for a list, they tell me that I have to hire, if we're hiring one person, I'm forced to hire one person from the top three people who sign. There may be an extraordinary candidate who's the ninth person that signed. But by civil service rules, I would have to bypass everybody before that person, and they all have the right to appeal. So you have to have a legitimate reason for bypassing all those people. If you lose the bypass, civil service now orders you to put that person who was bypassed at the top of the list. So it's really not conducive to be playing games with the civil service rules. So to be able to hire from both civil service and non-civil service, that's a huge benefit to us.
Great. Um, and then a completely unrelated question, at least to this piece, but you know, it's been. Now several months that we've uh, you've kind of officially been in the full built-out uh building. How is that going? Any sort of, you know, comments or concerns around the space? How's that affected, you know, kind of your your department's ability to do your jobs?
It's fantastic. Um, but most importantly for Amy Rando and Jen Wykowski, they now have real offices. They can look out windows, they can see what's going on in the real world. Um, and we've been able to make the building more efficient just by the way it's streamlined. People who work together are now together. They're not spread throughout the building. Uh, the building is fantastic. It's clean, it's new, it's terrific. Um, couldn't be more thankful.
Great. Good. Well, I know we, it's always a challenge to recruit and retain, and hopefully that's a, not a huge part, but a small part of our ability to, you know, keep good officers and keep everyone sort of working happily and and productively together. So good to hear.
Everybody is happy with the building. Extremely pleased.
Great. All right, any other comments or questions? No, uh, seeing none, then I will take a motion to approve the Police Department Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five as presented.
Someone.
Seconded.
Uh, any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, uh, motion carries six zero. Uh, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Both for tonight and for all of the great work the department's doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief. All right, uh, item six Z, six C, excuse me, uh, the library budget. Uh, Director McDonald, I'll invite you up. Uh, and then I believe we have Dan Sherman from Finance Committee joining us.
Me, too.
Right. Well, while we're waiting for him to come over, Mr. Gill, if you wouldn't mind getting started.
Sure. Uh, library budget, we are requesting an increase of thirty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars over the current fiscal year. But due to less less trust fund income for fiscal twenty-five, uh, trust fund income was down uh ten thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. The actual tax levy increase to this budget is forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Uh, the salary line item has been increased thirty-four thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars. This includes contractual and negotiated increases for the director and two members of the Supervisory Union. But it also does include steps for the library union workers. The library union workers' contract has not been settled, and it will be settled. Uh, that money will be included um at a later date. Uh, contractual services have have been level funded. Materials and supplies has been increased five thousand dollars, uh, because capital outlay items have now been moved into the operating budget. So the overall increase of materials and supplies is five thousand dollars. The total budget request of fiscal twenty-five is one million nine hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. With one million nine hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars coming from tax levy. And fifty-two thousand seventy dollars coming from available funds, which are the library trust funds.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gill. Uh, Ms. McDonald, anything you'd like to add before we begin the discussion?
Not unless you just answer questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sherman, anything from the Finance Committee?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me. Um, yeah, the subcommittee met with the trustees back in January. Um, had a good discussion. Um, most everything went really well. There was. Adjustments that were made um to the initial budget we saw back in January. Um, so we're coming in on a tax levy basis of an increase of two point six percent. I went ahead and further went and did some analysis on what the total budget might be, uh, making various assumptions on the union contract settlement. And for example, if the settlement comes in with COLA increases of three percent, uh, the total budget would go up about four point two percent. Um, which we felt uh would be a reasonable outcome, but obviously negotiations have to take place. Um, and settlement um approved by all parties. So we're comfortable with the budget, uh, our subcommittee is, and uh. We thank the library, Catherine and trustees and so forth for their assistance in making sure we understand what's going on and. Um, adjusting their initial budget to meet um our needs. So we're very comfortable with what's being presented tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sherman. Uh, any questions or comments from the council? Council Dubrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Um, good evening, Director. Question for you on utilization of the library. Where where do we stand in terms of, um, I don't even know what, I know you don't measure, it's not one way to measure it because there are, you know, obviously like. Number of books checked out, um, number of, um, the amount of borrowing that happens renewable and it just like online, a number of people that attend programs, so that's kind of a hard number, but. Um, where where do we fall in terms of utilization this past year, say, compared with years prior?
So we're not back to it for coming into the building for certain metrics, we're not back to where we were before the pandemic. But for circulation, we are.
Okay.
We have been. The circulation changes a little bit between um electronic and and a hard copy. But it's still, when you're looking at books, it's still a hard copy that people want. That that's still a thing. Um, the the electronic stuff is changing dramatically all the time. There's streaming. Um. I can't wait until DVDs go away because because there's a whole nice space there that we could do something with besides store DVDs. And more and more people are streaming, and you can, you know, stream for free, so. Yeah, I would say we're getting pretty good use. All of this data we're looking at very closely now because we're doing a strategic plan. Um, in the youth room, we're really regrouping to look at the community and look at how many new things, how many new buildings are coming in? What are the family dynamics, you know? Um, I'm a grandmother now, so I go to the the meetings and say, you know, grandparents shouldn't have to sit on the floor. So we're 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 kind of reevaluating how the population's changing and what people might need, what people, what families might need after the pandemic for from, you know, that slow. Uh, educational process that happened while they were learning at home, if there's ways that we can help there. So, you know, we're busy and we'll see more, a lot more metrics within a year, I think. But but it's up. It's not.
That's really encouraging.
Yes, good use.
And how do you feel um about the capacity you have, the spatial capacity? Do you feel like you're able to accommodate the programs? Um, that you're looking to run in what you have?
With the people we have right now? With with staffing?
In terms of the facilities, like specifically?
Oh, the facility. Well, there's no parking. Everyone will tell you that. There's no parking. And there is, there's parking all around the building, but it's not a lot. The building is surprisingly flexible. But um, there are things, people want a a a, they want private space, and we don't have a lot of private space. They they want study rooms for a single person. Actually, something we're considering is like a phone booth. Um, but you want to find a way to place that so it doesn't change the look of the building. Because a phone booth doesn't really go with nineteen twenty-two. We're we're kind, so we're looking for something that's like very clear, lets the light through. And then there's all the other things like, you know, can people hide in it? Will it get dirty? Uh, where does it plug in? So there's a lot of aspects to that. Um, but it might solve, it might solve some problems. So we listen to what people are looking for, and then we try to adjust the space that way. But I think you all know, people want space in town. And so even when I think about the ACE Center, and I I will talk to Dan from time to time, what are they doing there? Is there office space there? Is there times when he might want to have coffee and let people work during the day or something, or at the civic center? There are some of those needs that we hear, so I don't just think in terms of, oh, can the library accommodate that? But I'll also think, is there anyone else in town who might be able to work with us? Maybe we'll put a librarian over there or, you know, something like that.
And then finally, with respect to um friends of the library, I know that they've they've come before us before, and. I understand the history of this book sale, but it seems to be becoming more and more challenging because of the space requirements with that. Does the library administration work with or or? Talk about different ideas with friends in terms of other, because I understand it's an important revenue source, you know, or it it brings in money, but. Are there other things that have been considered or that you've seen from other, you know, libraries or specifically friends of other libraries? That we could perhaps think about doing so we could maybe pivot from the tangible book sale itself to something that would not have the same requirements of space and storage?
Right. The Friends are a separate organization, so and they meet with other Friends groups, and they have access to other Friends groups around the country so that they can get ideas that way. Um, one of the things that I have noticed and one of the things that is important to me is just simply Friends membership. Whether or not people have a membership, because the more members there are, I can come to you and say, we have eight hundred members, we we need this. Um, these eight hundred members that, you know, we even know we have them. Um, and membership earns quite a bit of money, and a lot of people will donate, so there is that. The advantage of the book sale is that it's a community event, so it's a little bit, you you know, we do Blossoms, and every year we think, do we really need to do Blossoms again? And it's such a community event, and there's nothing else like it. Um, the partnership is a little odd, you know, the the library and the and the and the business community. Uh, we're right on Main Street, so that works. So there, it's more than just the money sometimes. But you have to be able to make it work, and it has to be, you know, as with Blossoms, we couldn't get it to the point where it was so labor-intensive that. You've got more volunteers than attendees. Sometimes it feels that way. This, um, so it all has to sort of weigh. You have to weigh it.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Danny.
Thank you. Um, I know that a lot of libraries are now kind of rethinking libraries from the traditional way, and I think Cindy brought up a good point about. Programming being part of your budget, and has there been discussion about adding programming in in expansion of the budget?
In little ways, I've been adding it for years, and um I depend on, I can depend on state aid, which has decreased a bit. But Kevin knows that I hoard the state aid a little bit, and he will say, it's designed for you to use it, and that is how we, you know, we tend to sometimes use it for the programming as well. The other thing that's happened with the programming is that we are really recognizing that librarians are diversely talented. And very often can, if they have the time and the stamina, can produce something that's really good. So um, we give ukulele lessons, and that's a librarian who does that. So we just bought the ukuleles. And when you buy the ukuleles, that's something that circulates, so it's actually from the Books and Publications line item. So um, you, there are little creative ways to do it. You can always use more money. We typically spend about forty thousand dollars a year on programming. But that includes Plaza Jazz. And Plaza Jazz is a big-ticket item.
Yeah.
And I think we get our money's worth, which is why um I would fundraise for that.
Yeah, so I think our library is so, it's a beautiful space. Um, there's so many opportunities, and as our community grows, as we add more housing. It's a great community gathering opportunity, so I I would advocate for more programming, because I do think that that's. That's a way that we can draw in young people, too, who are coming into our community.
So one of the things we're doing, and I don't know if you've noticed this, but um, Dan at the ACE Center had the storytelling thing for, it was a whole series where you could go and tell your story. So those two women are now giving a workshop at the library about how to tell your story. How do you put it together? How do you present it? And so the people who do that program can then go um to the ACE Center. So I'm working with Dan to, you know, we'll we'll do things back and forth. Because it's, sometimes you get different populations that way. People who wouldn't go to the library might, if they hear about.
Right.
This thing there, or vice versa. Yeah, so working together is a a definite plus.
Great, thank you.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, I just have a couple of specific sort of budget questions, Kevin, maybe for you. Can you speak just maybe one or two sentences on the um, the the capital to operating? Can you speak just maybe one or two sentences on the capital to operating shift? What specifically is that, if you know off the top of your head?
Every year, there's a capital request made by the library for capital outlay expenditures. Some of the items were probably seen as more operational and that they should be not included in the capital outlay, so therefore, some of those items, those requests are now being incorporated in the operating budget.
Okay.
And those items can fluctuate from year to year, so.
Okay, so it's really just sort of a reclass of things that probably shouldn't have been capital in the first place?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then I just, one of the things that I noticed, you know, you talked about the, excuse me, I'm totally, the contractual services line being level funded. One of the things I did note, and Catherine, I'd love for you to speak a little bit about this, is just, there were some kind of puts and takes within it, so like in network services, for example, what we are actually sort of proposing to spend changes quite a bit. Can you, can you talk a little bit about just the trends and patterns that you're seeing in terms of use of some of those services?
Network services in particular?
That was one example, just because I know, you know, eBooks, you know, there was more funding for eBooks and less funding for some of the other resource, you know, more of the reference resources. Just if you have any kind of color commentary on some of those shifts.
Right, so almost every, for almost every line item here is very flexible from year to year. We don't know exactly what we're going to do, but we have a good idea, and so we have a list of things, some things have to get done, some things are surprises, and some things are on a wish list, and it kind of just travels from year to year so that everything gets covered. Maybe something won't get painted this year, but it will get painted next year, and we kind of do it that way. With Noble, what's different about that? So the automated network services, that's Noble, and that's a consortium of libraries, and they're pretty much billing us for the different services. And I'm now on the executive board, but every director is on the entire board, so we all vote on what that's going to be. So in this particular budget, we're cutting back on some databases, so we take all the statistics on those, they're very expensive, we were looking to see, you know, is there another alternative? So we've made some changes there, that was a cutback, but we're spending more on overdrive, and that will probably be, the audiobooks are outrageously expensive, but they're really well-loved.
Yeah, I know they're very popular.
They're very popular, so that went up a little bit. And then the regular service, the basic service, maintenance service, that went up just a little bit, which would be expected because it's that kind of a service, but they're very careful about limiting their increases, because we are all sharing that and everybody's in a different position. So does that explain it?
It does, no, thank you. It's, like I said, some of the details, what you dig in, are kind of interesting, just as we think about the different patterns of use in kind of libraries in the 21st century. And I do want to echo, you know, we talked about programming and you mentioned the creativity of the staff, and I really do want to echo how impressive it is, the breadth of programming that they put on, and the breadth of sort of just subject matter expertise and enthusiasm that your staff has for some of these. I mean, it really is, you know, my kids have done a number of these programs, I mean, I am at the library at least weekly, and it really is just an amazing resource, and I never cease to be amazed by just the enthusiasm, the creativity and the engagement of your staff with the community. It really is something that we should be really proud of as a community.
I agree. Going in there every day, there's another surprise, and, you know, that people every month will put together a trivia game. I don't kind of think of anything that would be much harder than that, because you have to be careful with the questions, you've got to be able to get them, but they've got to be hard enough to be, you know, yeah, they'll do, they're very talented and they're very invested in the community, so it's really nice. There's been a lot of turnover, there's people retiring, and there's been a lot of that. And finally, I will just make a plug for the police department. I've done this before, but we are just so, so lucky, and I was telling Chief earlier when we were waiting out there, it really helps librarians because they have more successes, because they're not dealing with the things that are really, really hard, that require a social worker. So if the things, if they can use a social worker, they sometimes can go the next step. And we recently have, there's a young man who got a job, and it took quite a bit of time to do it, but part of it was, you know, somebody helped with a social security number, somebody helped with, and it was because the police department had these resources that we could call. So everybody working together makes it so much more successful, and it's really a relief to have them there, and they're wonderful, they're so responsive, so I can't say enough good things about them.
Great, well, we always appreciate that, I'm sure, I'm sure Chief Torres Corry and his team do as well. So seeing no other comments, I'll take a motion to approve the library budget for fiscal year 2025 as presented.
Seconded.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Catherine.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate your time here tonight, and again, everything you and your team do for the community.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Gill, as well.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Yes.
All right, moving on, item number seven, presentations and updates on some underused town properties. Mr. Mayo, I believe you're walking through this?
Yes, I am. So this is really a very kind of high-level look at number of properties in town that, you know, the council had asked for, it's an update on, and they were the Herd School, which is at, on Quarter Street, 27 Quarter Street, the John McCarthy Senior Center, which is at 30 Converse Street, Butler Ave, which we'll talk about shortly, and 5 Carmen Street. So might be a little bit different than the order here, but I start with the Herd School. So little known fact, I did attend the Herd School for six years, that was when they had first grade through sixth grade, so don't.
That wasn't in 1899 when it was built?
That was not in 1899, although it feels it, no. It was, it built in 1899, but the auditorium was built in the 1920s. The lot is about 45,000 square feet, the building has 22,000 or so square feet. It was used as an elementary school for many, many years, and then it was turned over to the town in 2005. Some may remember that we used it as a private school, Nazareth Academy actually went there for a few years. It was swing space for the police during the public safety building construction, and actually ended up saving us quite a bit of money, because we didn't have to rent storefront somewhere, or trailers, or things like that, and it worked out well. It is currently be used as storage, and the Friends of BB Library book sale operations and storage there. It is a beautiful building, I think a lot of you have seen it, I go by it at least twice every day, sometimes more, because it's right in my neighborhood. Beautiful light in the buildings, the, a lot of the classrooms, the old classrooms were large, kind of a, for those of you that were on the Greenwood School tour today, big classrooms with great windows and great light. It does have a stage, and that's right here, where the, with some of the books there that the, for the BB Library storage. In 2016, we had a number, or at least two, community meetings, and we talked a lot about maybe doing something or selling the property at that time, this was after the Nazareth Academy left. There were a lot of comments made, and I actually have the notes from that, we probably had, you know, 70 or so people in the auditorium there, so it was kind of appropriate, we did a little tour, a lot of people that had gone to school, or their kids had gone, they'd got a, got a ability to walk around and look at it, and there was a lot of different discussion at that point, and I think, you know, from putting a DPW yard there, one gentleman talked about, and quickly after the meeting came back and said, I want to retract my statement, what was I thinking? I don't want the DPW yard. They were things backing up to, you know, a cultural center, to things like that. Housing was a, housing was a big thing, and maybe that was kind of a consensus. One person wanted to knock the old building down and put three house lots there, so people were all over the place. But if it were to be used for housing, it probably would be about 11 units, 11 plus or minus units, and people talked about a park and what have you, and rec center, so went through a lot of that. I would say that whatever we, if we decide to go forward with something, we should go back to some of these community meetings to have, people come back in and look at it and see if things have changed, or people's minds have changed. But they were very robust and kind of fun meetings, actually seeing a lot of people in the neighborhood that I remember. So I'd like to, I've had a lot of comments from people about what to use this for, and what's come up to me the most is use of the property, although we should go back and look at and talk to the neighborhood, and to look at this as housing with units that would be affordable and/or units that for some people that have some challenges in life, and use that that way. So that's something that I would think about, and I would think about referring to the Affordable Housing Trust with this, the trust committee, the trustees, this may be a good first project for them, but something we could certainly think about in the future. It is, it is a beautiful, wonderful building, and I would not add on to it personally, I would not put garages next to it like they did with the Frank one, I think it is a nice-looking unit the way it is. That's just me on that, but we can look at that later. The John McCarthy Senior Center was built in 1910, was turned over to the town, I want to say in the 70s or the 80s, but I can't find that date, so I didn't look it in there. And currently, it houses the senior center and veteran services on floors one and two, depending on your, on your orientation. The third floor is vacant for storage, there is a beautiful stage on the fourth floor, and there's approximately 6,700 square feet on those two floors that could be used, and it has something that is fabulous, that a lot of these other places don't have, it has a working elevator, which makes a lot of differences on what we might be able to use that building for. Again, a beautiful old stately building, love the way it looks, fits into neighborhood. Again, big classrooms, big, big spaces that could be used with some of the most wonderful light that comes in through the windows, you try to capture it in some of these pictures, really something that we would want to maintain. Those windows would have to be replaced, but we'd certainly want to maintain the historic look of it and the light that would come in. I think some of you took a tour, I think maybe all of you, most of you took a tour, or have been there. This is the top floor, which has a stage in it, which is really a very cool space, I think could be used, and, you know, we heard about the Savings Bank Theater that a lot of us donated to, a lot of us did a lot of sweat equity on to make sure it happened. The new high school, while it will have a auditorium, that auditorium will be kind of like the auditorium at the Galvin, it'll be a 760 seats or something like that.
Something in that neighborhood.
I can't, it is not going to be that small intimate 200-seat theater that we had at the Savings Bank Theater that we have at the current high school. And I did take a picture of the elevator, because I thought that was important to see. It does work, we've been on it. So this is a, we've talked about this, I think that we could move from, move some of the town departments from 5 Carmen, it's very cramped there anyway, it doesn't, we can't utilize the second floor because of 5 Carmen, because there is no elevator. I would keep the fourth floor stage here as performance space, I just think would be great, I can, we talked a little bit about, or Council has mentioned to me, would there be availability for the Friends of the BB book sale area there? I think that could, that could be accommodated. The cost estimate to refurbish the third floor into office space and the, and the stage in that area is about $450,000, not outlandish. Butler Ave.
Steve, is that gone up? Because I thought we, it was 300 a while back, or am I misremembering?
I think that maybe that did not have everything in it, yeah. But I will, that is, that is the current price, though. Butler Ave was acquired by the town in 2020 as part of an environmental settlement, there is a $2 million note owed on this, the site does contain almost 11 acres, the contamination area is two-plus acres, and it also has some wetlands on it. We still do not have an exact delineation of both of those areas, something we're working through with the DEP, which had a few fits and starts. We did get a conceptual approval from the DEP on our plan, which is to cap the alleged contaminated area, alleged by the town. There would be an area use limitation over that, which again, passive recreation, which means you can probably walk in paths, and you could probably throw a frisbee, but you can't kick a soccer ball, as Tom has distinguished what passive recreation means. Summer of 2023, town files notice of intent with Conservation Commission, we had an issue with our LSP retiring, and had the actual first attorney retired.
Sorry, Stephen, LSP stands for?
Licensed Site Professional.
Thank you.
That, there was a retirement there, we got a new LSP, and that LSP developed a new testing plan, and we are continuing to do testing right now to look at the lines of limit of contamination, to make sure that that's, if it is extended where it is. Those should be completed this spring, and we'll do the plan development, wetland delineation, and my town engineer assures me, this is a long date DEP approval on December 2025. So I think he wants to make sure that I over, that I underpromise on this. This is the site here, I actually walked it the other day, this is going right in off of Butler Ave, it's around the 90, Butler Ave area. It is, you know, wooded, but is a nice piece of property. This is the house that is part of the property, that is boarded up, that we had a public comment on this evening. It is very hilly, I will tell you, I almost fell, but I did not, in walking around there. But there is some nice, really cool upland areas there, really is nice, and this is just kind of a look at some of the debris that is there now. Again, I think at the end of this whole process here, I've thought about this a lot, I think this is a place that could be used for housing, and I thought about what type of housing through as well, and I think affordability is a key thing, we've talked about, a lot of Council has mentioned to me, affordability for particularly seniors, seniors that would like to stay in town, seniors that are, that don't want to maintain that three- or four-bedroom house with that big oil bill and a lot of empty rooms, but they want to stay in town, and they don't necessarily want to go to a garden-style apartment. That's things that I'm hearing from people. So you see some of these, you know, this is what it may look like, the red area, maybe something that's, that's a contaminated area, and the rest could be a number of houses there, but we're not going to really know till we pull it all together. But what I think would be kind of cool, and you see these developments out there, I know I get something in my mailbox every day, it seems, they're in Southern New Hampshire, what have you, they, you know, that along with the AARP card that they want me to join and that stuff too, but these are manageable houses with hopefully some shared driveways, some to kind of reduce the impervious area, reduce the infrastructure necessary. I think that's something that I would, I'm envisioning that for that site, and I think that would fit that niche for people that are looking to downsize and stay in Wakefield, if they want a one-level living, they want to, you know, do the second floor, that could be up to them, but this could be something that we could, you know, and I would say, again, partner with someone to come in and do it, I would call it a kind of a limited, a local initiative program, which is kind of a friendly 40B, to get that down with the, again, with the affordability component in there. It's just another view of type of developments that are out in the area like that. So we need to complete the approval process with the DEP regarding the contamination area, complete remediation, and look at the pathways, which I think will be really nice, finalize the wetland delineation in this, and that would be coming up. 5 Carmen, purchased by the town in 1999 for $860,000, do you remember?
I do recall.
That price did include Real Lafayette, which is the white building at the back of the parking lot at Town Hall. Contains approximately 4,000 square feet, there's an accessibility entrance to the rear of the building, currently utilized by the Health and Treasury Departments, there is no ADA access to the second floor or the basement. We do have some storage in the basement for town departments. Again, you're all familiar with that building, in fact, we were fixing the front walkway the other day, the ramp at the back that I talked about. Some pictures of the second floor, again, there's some nice Some pictures of the second floor, again, there's some nice features of this building, but it is old. It would need a lot of work for those of you that have gone through it, walked through it. You know, again, second floor, I didn't, but again, some nice features, some nice big windows overlooking the common, so you could see that this could be utilized for something. What happens here really hinges upon the relocation of the Health and Treasury Departments. Again, I would lean personally more towards housing here with the potential of two to four units. And again, working with, we put a lot of work to the Affordable Housing Trust, because we do have some funds in there that may help us partner with somebody, or that will help us partner with somebody and make things more affordable on it. And that said, very quick, I wanted to give you a high-level look at that, and really, these are based on comments that I've been getting from people. But I think, again, we certainly would want to have a public forum process where people can come in and talk about it, but these are the things that I'm hearing from people that are talking to me, and maybe talking to you, you're hearing the same things. That's it. Mr. Chairman?
Great. Thank you. Let's open it up for discussion from the council. Council Danny.
Thank you. This is really informative and helpful, and I concur for a lot of things that you were saying. I do think since that our priority probably should be housing, since we have a housing shortage, and it should be a focus on affordable housing. Do you know, Butler Ave, I liked what you showed for those spaces for senior housing. Do you know about how many units would fit in?
That's going to depend upon the, on what happens.
We don't know how many.
How many, no. That's really going to have to depend upon, you know, the area and what's wetlands and what isn't.
Yeah.
You know, we always were hoping that, you know, maybe, you know, with, with this, this design, you know, could we get 12 duplexes? I don't know. It's going to depend on it. You know, they would be, you know, not huge, would be, I would say it would be like a condo development.
Right.
So they would be close together and things like that.
And I, I think that that's, that's great. The other thing.
Again, just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I really, I like that. That's one thing that I've heard consistently is that people, that, one of the problems too with housing is, is that people are staying in their houses longer because they don't have any place to go, and that's driving up costs as well, so, and people want to stay in their, in their community.
I think the other day, there was either one or two single-family homes on the market in Wakefield, that was it.
That was it.
That was it.
Yeah. It's like, where do you go? So, yeah, so I like that. And the senior center, that space looks really nice. One thing that I was reading a lot about is, I like to see multi-generational, generational space, and so if there's a way to, you know, bring different people into the, in different people from the community into the senior center, and think about collaborative efforts like that, like young people going in with seniors.
I really thought, in looking at the stage area, that wouldn't it be great to bring in junior high or the high school kids? Or even, we saw some grammar school kids singing today at the tour of the Greenwood School. Wonderful.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that, yes, the generations, I think, would love that.
Yeah, it's great. I mean, I think it works well for the, for the seniors as well as for the younger people as well, and, and a lot of people are looking for those opportunities, so I think that's great. And then my final thing I'm going to say is that, you know, when the master plan does become available, I think that that's going to be able to provide us with a lot of guidance as well. In addition, and of course, having community forums as we go further into the process, but I think that master plan will be able to guide us effectively. And I also think that the new person, or the director of strategic, Samantha, for strategic growth and development, or whatever we're calling the type, the position, will be really instrumental in maybe leading these community forums and really looking at the master plan and kind of bringing things together to, to have that community input.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Clayton.
Yeah, just a few comments. The first thing I'd like to state for the public is, this is just the beginning.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's what I said.
We're not saying what's going to happen to any particular building, any particular place. You know, on Hurd, I know that, you know, a recently retired, longtime wonderful CPA member, Jim Payne, had actually, on his own, drawn up some plans for units in that building. I've had people say we should knock it down and make it a park. I've had people say, you know, they favored senior housing in there, and we also have the possibility of, you know, modern income housing and maybe doing it similar to what Steve had mentioned there. So this is just the start. On Five Common, you know, it's a smaller building. I don't want to overemphasize the Housing Trust because we have a whopping $760,000 and no means of necessary funding beyond that, so we'll, we'll have to see how all that works out in terms of how much the Affordable Housing Trust can really be involved in projects. Again, more to be decided. And I hope, as some of the comments were made, that we do have more public input. I'm not so sure that the current version of the master plan is really going to address a lot of this, we'll have to see.
Direction.
We don't have a final product just yet. I've been a little disappointed in the Butler Ave. Just a quick question since we had a comment, Steve. Is there a safety issue out at the old house up there?
You know, I, I have not heard of that, but we will check into it. It is boarded up, I saw it when I was there, and I'll make, we'll make sure. I, I don't think I'd knock it down yet.
Right.
Because who knows what we might use it for.
And just so people know, we've, we've all been dealing with that issue since, what, 2014? Not all of us. I wasn't here. I've been following it pretty carefully the last couple of years.
Well, Butler Ave, not since 2014.
Butler Ave, yeah.
Not since 2014.
No, well.
2020, I think.
Some of the testing goes back pretty far, though. Some of the environmental testing.
Might have been the owner looking at it.
Yeah, could have been the owner at that time. That's, that's what we have in the file right now. And I wanted to point out that it is the current position of Weston and Sampson that we will not, we will, they've sought it, as the new western site professional, they've sought until December 31st, 2025, to do the remediation, get approval on the remediation plan. So that's just the start. Then after that is the remediation, then after that.
We, we hope it's earlier.
And I know, I've been, right, I mean, I know, I was told in December '22, construction might be in '23. You know, I've been following this pretty closely. I did introduce a company.
Yeah.
To come to us and talk about possibly doing as many as 60 SHI units out there. And some of that will depend on what, what the ultimate resolution is. If we can build on a cap and do it safely, you know, there may be more acreage. If somebody, somebody might say, oh, it's really only X amount of acres. Well, it could be Y amount of acres, depending on what kind of project you're proposing and what kind of space you're using.
Right. And the units really would change, whether it was a garden-style sort of place or...
I don't think there, any determination has been made, and I just wanted to make it clear, if we're looking at townhouse style, you know, the company I brought in does that kind of thing, you know, and it was just a presentation, just an informational presentation, but they could get for us, if they had enough acreage, 60 SHI units, helping us to get to that 10% on 40B that we've been talking about virtually forever. So in relative to the senior center, I agree, it's good use for the building. Just, you know, I'm glad you, you had the friends on the, on the PowerPoint. I was out of town last week, so I didn't see it until I, until I looked at this material today. But just to let the public know, I hope we do have a lot more public input and, and a lot of discussion. These are four separate properties, four separate projects. And to another comment tonight, we don't own, I don't know if the federal government owns the post office, I mean, they could be leasing it from somebody. That would be a pretty expensive process, I would think, for us to get involved in that. And I know a lot of people have told me, including, you know, folks in the library, boy, it'd be nice to have that building too, but it would, it'd be nice to have a lot of, it'd be nice to have a lot of things.
You won't get that building for a dollar.
Right. We won't get it for a dollar. So we are, we're pursuing every avenue we can figure, look into. We're, we're trying to increase, you know, our subsidized housing inventory wherever we can, not exclusively to that, but, you know, we're all looking into it. And, and this is just the beginning of, I think, what's going to be a long process. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayo, on the, the post office, I know previously there was a question that came up of, could we, you know, use the parking lot that's no longer being used by the post office? And my understanding is, we approached them and they basically said, don't talk to us.
They weren't too happy about that. They weren't too thrilled with that.
Counsel Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Chines.
Liability issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Just a couple of questions with the Hurd. Recently, I actually went, and you can look at those community meetings, the one that took place in 2016 and 2018, you can look at them online. I looked at them within the last couple of months, the ones that you hosted. I agree that we should have community meetings on the Hurd again, because there are various potential uses for it. And I also concur, most people that were at those sessions, and it was, was well-attended, were advocating for housing, but folks had other ideas as well. So is, should those community meetings be conducted by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees? Or should we have those community meetings first by town officials before we turn it over to the...
I think first by, I think we'd invite them.
Yeah, that's prudent.
But I think that would be by town officials, yeah.
Yeah, because if we give it to the board of trustees first, there might be a perception that we're going towards housing.
Exactly.
We want to make it clear that we're entertaining all options for the use of that property. But other than that, I think this is an outstanding presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Butt.
Yeah, same. I, you know, these are issues that we've talked about for a while, so I loved this presentation, I think, kind of doing some community meetings once Samantha joins us and the master plan. I was thinking the same thing, and that we have such an opportunity for synergy here. I think the senior center really excites me, because I think there's just such potential there. So I loved going on the tour, and I'm hoping your team, Steve, is kind of cleaning it up, because there just seems to be a lot of random stuff there, and then great stuff, like a piano.
Yes.
But I think...
Not a very usable piano.
No, but I think getting out some of the junk, just to, seeing the potential of that building is, you know, a first step. But I, I love these discussions, and I've said this before at a meeting, and I'm just going to put the bug in your ear again, Steve. Bedford, the town of Bedford had, did exactly what we're thinking about, what your, one of the recommendations for Butler Ave, where they made kind of one-level houses really close together, and it's, it literally overlooks like a wetlands. I don't even know how many, but reach out, because it would be great to learn more about that project. They were amazing.
Thank you.
Like, you know, one bedroom, they were like some, two levels, but bedroom on the first floor, like they were great.
Thank you. It's hard to find places like that around here. A lot of them are in New Hampshire and...
Yeah. I don't, I forget, it had a name, but the town manager would know.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Dabrowski.
I think this is really helpful, Steve, in terms of looking at the amount of square footage that we have in terms of town assets here. And I do think, and even some of the present, or some of the answers tonight address this, we, we do have a lot of need across our various departments for space. And so I am sensitive and cautious about the notion of forfeiting too much space that we may have need for in the future as a town, because once we lose this, this space, we don't have it anymore, right? And I'm also very sensitive to the senior center specifically, because if you've spent time there, like, they have so many programs that are going on, so many more programs they want to be doing, but they are space constrained. And I think that that can be such a more dynamic building. I'm really reluctant to see offices go in that particular space, because I think it, or storage for that matter, because I think that those are floors that can be utilized in, in much better ways. Karen Burke, the director, has done a great job. She has these partitions that she had ordered to divide up just the basement, because there are so many activities going on, they don't have the, the square footage for it, for them to happen. And they would have a lot more programs if they had the capacity to, to host them. So I think we can't lose sight of that. And it's also okay to have a little bit of available space to the town, because we're, we may have new hires in the future, we may have just other things. And I, I'm reluctant to forfeit town space that could be operational for town purposes going forward, and I think that's part of the discussion too. So I don't want anyone to have any preconceived notions relative to removing health to senior center, for instance. I think those are discussions to be had. What I think would be really helpful in this discussion, while public import, public participation is paramount to this decision-making, I also think being able to get a better needs assessment from the departments themselves. So understand from the senior center, all right, what do you have now, what can you do, and if you had more, what would you do with it? If we did that for the senior center, for the library, DPW, whatever the case might be, I think having that kind of internal analysis by department would also be really enlightening too. You know, there, because there are so many different options here, and we could have what would really become consensus meetings, or in some ways wishlist meetings with the community, but I think the community decision-making guided by the assessments that are done by the departments would make for a far more robust exercise, so that we're really just kind of zoning in on how to best utilize this limited, ultimately limited square footage that we have available to us. And I'm not sure that we've done that, I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily a part of the master planning process, but I think a current and future needs assessment by department would be important data to bring into this, this discussion as we, as we present to the community. But also important to say, these are like very loose recommendations that you just kind of offered, there's no preconceived notion of what to do with any of this space. And some of it, I think, might, I'd also be interested in knowing, for example, Five Common, you know, what are the structural limitations we have with that? Because it has been, while it has a few nice features, it has been so stripped of its original character that we're not maintaining that building, we're not going to maintain that building presumably, so, you know, what, what are we looking at in terms of, you know, the structural wherewithal? What do we, you know, just at a high level, what would it take to kind of get that restored back to something that would be, you know, in fitting with the character of the original structure? And if we can't get there, if it's cost prohibitive, that's also a consideration for us, which also, I think, helps to guide the, the community discussions out of the going forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I just want to, you know, echo as we kind of close out this discussion piece. Thank you for the presentation, and it's, it's exciting to be able to talk about, you know, what we might be do with, what we might be able to do with some of these spaces, both in terms of sort of our needs as, you know, kind of the management of the town, but how do we address some of these larger issues in the community like housing? So I'm, I'm very excited about that. You know, as I think about next steps, you know, I think with Butler Ave, that's a little bit, a little bit of a ways off, obviously. We're going through a process around the, the environmental remediation, and so, you know, I, I think right now this is more of an awareness discussion for both us and folks in the community, but I think there's a lot more to come there. You know, on the Hurd School, I would maybe make a recommendation that we do have some public forums there sooner rather than later, and, and maybe ask if we can do that, you know, kind of in parallel with a needs assessment from, from our departments, you know, so that we can gather as much information in a reasonable period of time as possible. I am probably most excited about the senior center, and, and the reason for that is, I look at, you know, $450,000 to activate, you know, 7,000 square feet of space in a building that already is really active, is, is pretty short money to be able to turn what is vacant space and storage space into something really exciting. And so my ask there would be, you know, as we do this needs assessment, can we then translate that relatively quickly into basically a plan for that building and a proposal around what a design might look like, you know, what we might use the space for, you know, high-level architectural drawings and cost estimates, so that we can kind of look at that in a, in a, in a more robust way? I know we've done kind of a rough estimate, but I, I would say it's worth, you know, putting pen to paper on that a little bit more specifically and figuring out what we might do there. And I think similarly with Five Common, I'm less excited about that building, just because I suspect that the cost of activating that building the way we would want to is going to be prohibitive due to the lack of an elevator, due to the fact that I, I think there are some pretty significant issues there, just based on the, the tour that we've had. But I'd also like to see sort of some concrete estimates there of like, what would it actually cost to estimate, to renovate that? You know, to bring it up to code, to have an elevator there, to allow us to use the building to its full potential? Because I, I think that will be important to our future discussions of, is it something that we activate as a town property versus something that we try to, you know, activate with an outside partner for development into something else? But again, I'm very excited about these discussions, and Steve, maybe with those sort of homework assignments, would ask that, you know, particularly with, you know, the Hurd School, public forums and, you know, some further detail around potential uses and costs for both Five Common and the senior center, I, I'd suggest that might be a good next step for us to consider over the next couple of months.
I, I should have mentioned that some people have also thought that Hurd School would be a good new town hall, so municipal offices, so there's all these different opinions out there.
Any other comments or sort of other next steps for, for Steve?
I was just kind of wondering, is pursuant to your recent comment, you know, are we authorizing an actual architectural, you know, because Counsel Dabrowski has indicated you may not be in favor of, you know, giving up town space at all until... be in favor of, you know, giving up town space at all until we have further input from the senior center? Are we authorizing the expenditure of significant funds for architectural plans?
So my my assumption would be that that's work that we could do in-house.
I think, well, I I took it to do in-house.
Yep.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, we don't have an architect.
No, we don't. So it would be engineering and, you know.
Right, something more specific.
Yeah.
Schematics.
Exactly.
Who who might be there, what does the square footage?
Yeah.
Might be used, okay.
Yeah, and and I would say that request is intended to be kind of consistent with Counsel Dabrowski's comment around, you know, assessing from our departments what their space needs are. I think once we know that, you know, I I would maybe ask, you know, just for, you know, some sense of if we were to fit out particularly the third floor, you know, what would actually go there? What do we think it would look like?
Right. For the senior center.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, I I would, you know, when I, when I talk about Five Common, I'm not looking for kind of an architectural plan. I think that's more of an engineering assessment of, again, if we were to do something with that building, and I'm not saying what it would be, but if we were to do something with that, like what do we think the price tag is? It is a million dollars, is it $3 million? You know, there there's a lot there and I just, I I'd like to know, like, what's the the ballpark of what we'd be talking about if we were to do something there?
Okay.
All right. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight. We have a number of items related to our upcoming town meeting in the spring. First one, item number eight A is a citizen, excuse me, a citizen petition for a zoning amendment related to a self-storage overlay district on North Ave. I'd like to ask for a motion to refer this to the planning board as required by charter for public hearing prior to town meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Great, any discussion? Yep, Counsel Dabrowski?
Just threatening to watch it, just so we're we're clear on this. A and B both are citizen petitions. It's our obligation as a council to refer this on. We're not taking a position on either of these, one way or the other, but it's it's just a procedural, bumptious stuff.
Correct, and and I would sort of go further and say, you know, I think these are both, I suspect, proposals that will generate a lot of discussion at town meeting. And so I would encourage folks, when those hearings do get scheduled, to participate and attend if they have any questions, concerns, anything like that. Any other comments on the motion to refer this one to the planning board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item eight B is also a citizen's petition for a zoning amendment. This is related to establishing a marijuana establishment overlay district in the Audubon Road area. Also ask for a motion to refer this to planning board for hearing prior to town meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion on this one? Nope, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. I'm going to take items eight, C, D, and E together and ask for a motion to set the date for the annual town meeting as April 29th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at the Galvin Middle School and to further open the warrant for town meeting on February 12th, 2024 and to close the warrant on March 1st, 2024 at 12:00 noon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, just a a reference for folks, if we do run to, so April 29th is a Monday. If we do run a second night, the second night would be anticipated to be Thursday, the third. Sorry, Thursday, the second, if I'm doing my math correctly. All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item number nine is the warrant for the presidential preference primary election on March 5th, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve the warrant as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Next up, item number 10, licenses. Number 10 A is a DBA change for dockside restaurant. And I believe, Sheri, do we have speakers on this? I know we have someone in studio. Do we have anyone online as well?
Oh, okay, is that Jack?
Jack is here.
Yep.
Oh, good, okay, yeah, nope, we're all set, it's Jack.
All right. Well, sir, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and stating why you're here.
My name is Jack Yubacheski, owner of Wakefield Dockside Inc., DBA Paramos. And I'm here for, looking for you to approve a petition I have in to change the DBA from Paramos to Main Street Grill and Tap House. Our corporation stays the same, there's no change of the corporation.
Great, so it's just a DBA change?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the council? Counsel Dabrowski?
Good evening. Could you just help people who might be watching understand what what that will mean in practical terms for them?
Excuse me, sir.
Could you just help people that are watching understand what that means in practical terms?
At this time, we have two restaurants, both of Paramos, one in Malden, one in Wakefield. They were at dockside for 20, 25, 30 years. Keeping my, at this time, keeping my restaurant in Malden as a Paramos. My Wakefield location, my daughter Lisa and I want to go back to some of the other things that we did before on the dockside, namely have fundraisers. We, I had to do it under the Paramos with that brand. Use our room, she's, Lisa is very active with Board of Directors, local chamber, and there's a need to have function space. Bring back some comfort foods. We don't want to confuse our customer base, where they'll go to Malden for one thing and come inspect something in Wakefield. So that's, that's the reason why I want to change our DBA, not to confuse the customers. We've been in Wakefield now for, I think, 22 years. The Long family's been very generous to us. We just extended our lease nine more years. And I think within that period, my daughter will probably take over the day of operation of the restaurant. So we're going to be here for a long time. We've lived in Wakefield for 32 years and we love it here. So we're going to stay here and that's the reason why I want to change our DBA.
I think that's really helpful for people to understand. Thank you for explaining.
Thanks, sir.
And I just want to add, you know, you, your family and and your business here have been such a a great part of the community and, you know, a good contributor to a lot of the local causes. And so we really appreciate your engagement in Wakefield and and everything that you do is as part of, as part of this community.
Thank you.
Any questions or other questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the change of license for the change of DBA as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much again for everything. Thank you for bearing with us for a long meeting, we appreciate it.
I live down the street.
Head back home, good luck with the storm tomorrow. Next up is item 10 B. This is a one day liquor license request for an event at the America Hall Civic Center on March 7th, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item number 10 C is a motion, a, I'll take a motion to approve a one day liquor license for an event at the Crystal Community Club on March 8th, 2024.
So moved.
Seconded.
Great, any discussion? I actually have a question on this one, Mr. Mayo. I thought that the the CCC already did have a liquor license. Is there any reason why we're doing this separately as a one day?
They do have a liquor license with the club, but when someone rents it and they are charging, there has to be another one.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
So this isn't a club event?
Okay. Great, any further questions? Nope, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item number 10 D, this is, I'll take a motion to approve a secondhand dealer license for Rada Boutique located at 394 Main Street.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item 10 E, I'll take a motion to approve a common victular license for Sebastian's located at 100 Quanapowat Parkway.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries six zero. And finally, finally, item 10 F, I'll take a motion to approve a common victular license for Wakefield Roast Beef and Seafood located at 650 Main Street.
So moved.
Seconded.
And any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item 11, donations. 11A is a donation to the council on aging in the amount of $100. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the donation with thanks.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item 11B, take a motion to accept a donation of $1,250 to the BB Library.
So moved.
Seconded.
Great, and I should have added with thanks as well for that too.
Thanks to the two donors.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. All right, item number 12, Mr. Mayo, we have a motion to approve a bond anticipation note if you wouldn't mind doing the honors on this one?
I'll do the honors on that one, unless anybody else wants to, no?
No, you can have that one.
I just wanted to say that we did go out for the first real round of borrowing on the high school project. I was very happy with the results of the, and this is a short term borrowing, so, but the net interest cost on this was at 3.18% because the premiums, that's really good. Think about what mortgage rates are now and what people are getting, so I'm pretty pleased with that and let's hope that we get good results when we go out with a with a longer term one in the fall, hopefully with some changes in the market. So anyway, we hereby determine in accordance with General Law Chapter 70B that the cost of the Memorial High School construction project authorized by vote of the town passed on January 28th, 2023, Article One, being financed with proceeds of a portion of the notes defined below, together with all of the bonds and notes of the town previously, previously issued to pay costs of this project does not exceed the portion of the total cost of the project that is not paid by by the school facilities grant. And we hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds to finance this project under General Law Chapter 70B. Further voted to approve the sale of 30,500, 30 million 500,000 at 5% general obligation bond notes, the notes of the town dated February 23rd, 2024, and payable on September 20th, 2024 to JP Morgan Securities LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $318,725, brings our interest cost down. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 31st, 2024 and a final official statement dated February 7th, 2024, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and are hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town, the treasurer, and the town council be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond consult of the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes of the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient or if such procedures are currently in place to view and update such procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with the relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes collectively to the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or other electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the town council, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and are hereby authorized to take any and all actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convened to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing books.
All right, do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
Is everyone clear on the motion? Do we need Steve to reread it?
Same motion I read every time, just if the numbers change.
Any discussion or questions?
Counsel Dabrowski? Mally question on this, Steve. From a financing perspective, I know that you say we're doing well here. If we end up at some point with less than favorable terms, can you remind me, do we have, does the municipality have the the ability to refinance the same way?
Yeah, it's actually called refunding. And but you do have to go a certain time period out. So there's not that it may be seven years or eight years or 10 years, I forget what it is off the top of my head. We did do that in the past. Okay. When rates came down, so yes, you can, but you have to wait a while.
So this and those that follow would be like the high watermark then basically? So because in.
Right, well, well, who knows?
Well, I'm saying like, we're locking in this this rate though.
We're locking in this rate for now until September and then we're redoing it again.
Okay.
Because we think, you know, everything we feel is that rates are going to come down a little bit.
Yeah.
And I also don't, I want you to do a larger borrowing, because we'll need more money then, because we'll ramp up in construction and there'll be more money.
We've been doing it incrementally for that reason.
Right, right, that's why we're doing it. So probably be a very large one we'll do in September to take advantage of that and then, you know, we'll see what happens.
And hoping the rate would be better at that point?
Right.
That would be the hope, okay?
Right, and the net interest cost that we presented at town meeting were, was like between four and a quarter and five and a quarter. We gave a high and a low, so if we came in at a net interest cost of three, I'd be pretty happy.
But this is, this is still much better than.
Oh, this is better than.
The homeowners are seeing.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly, yeah, under this environment. Thank you.
Counsel McLean?
So in September, Steve, would we be rolling this into the next?
We'd be rolling this into the next one and adding one.
Yeah, and did you specifically state for the public, it is not a bad rate, so.
Yes.
Did you state what the net rate is at?
The net, that rate is what, 3.18?
1.8.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, 3.1826%.
So there would be reason to believe that the, if the Fed does start to look at rates, I mean, it seems like that's the, that's what the anticipated trajectory would maybe.
Yeah.
Then when this gets rolled in September theoretically.
Theoretically, all of things, all of it will be for longer term at that point, so that'll be.
All right, super helpful, thank you.
But I think that it, you know, that's our hope, right?
And I have to imagine our bond rating factors into this.
Yes, absolutely, this is part.
That's what really drives it.
It certainly drives it, yeah.
Which is AAA, by the way.
AAA, AAA comes in.
I I just want to say with this, just a thank you to to Mr. Mayo, to, you know, our town treasurer and his financial team. So there is a lot of thought and planning that goes into the strategy around borrowing for a project like the high school. I mean, obviously, we've kind of approved the funding for it, but that still doesn't mean that there aren't really consequential decisions that our financial team makes as they think about the strategy of what to borrow when and under what, which vehicles. And so I appreciate sort of the the time, the thought, and, you know, really the the foresight that goes into these decisions. I mean, it's something that the team takes very seriously and I I think, you know, we as a town benefit for that.
Thank you, yeah, it's a great team. We spend a lot of time discussing it.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item number 13, I will take a motion to approve the January 22nd, 2024 town council meeting minutes.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six-zero. Item number 14, do we have any announcements from the council? I have a, oh, go ahead, Council.
Catherine, Director Catherine mentioned it from the library blossom, at the Blossoms, it's Saturday, April 27th, they've started selling tickets. It is a great community event, so please join if you can.
Great. Other announcements, Council Vincent?
Thank you, Director. I did want to say one quick thing. We've had the privilege, along with the school committee, to go and visit numerous schools over the last couple of weeks. I think every public school has been visited except, with the exception of the high school, which is coming up later this month or early March. My children are in their 30s. I haven't had a child in middle school or elementary school for over 20 years. I just want to say how impressed I've been with not just the principals, the faculty, the teachers, but especially the young children. I was in a class today in Greenwood, and they were working on a math project. They were sitting on the floor, one particular student was in charge of the project, and I, I looked at all of the rest of the students, and every single one of them was paying attention. They were respectful when we walked into the room, they gave presentations to us when we first went to each school. The children were very polite, they were very articulate, many of the children escorted us around the school, they were assigned to do that. I just was, as somebody who did not have children in the school system, and today was the first day I ever walked into Greenwood School in my life, every school that I've been to during these tours over the last couple of weeks, I've been incredibly impressed with what I've seen. It's a real testament to the school system that we have here in Wakefield. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to echo, I mean, as someone who does have students in the school system, there is no place that I would rather my students, my children, go to school. I just, you know, I echo your sentiment, I mean, the tours have been excellent, I really appreciate the, the work on behalf of the administration, the principals, and all the teachers who've participated. It's been a really, just wonderful experience, I think, for those of us that have been able to participate from the town council and the school committee, and, and something that I, I've appreciated greatly. Other announcements, Council Dabrowski?
I just wanted to mention that we have what I guess has been called Winter Storm Lorraine.
Oh, it has a name?
Yes, indeed. Lorraine, which is on, she's on her way to Wakefield, so we're told. Just a reminder that town hall and the Senior Center and other town buildings will be closed tomorrow in anticipation of the storm, starting midnight tonight through midnight tomorrow night. There's the on-street parking ban as well to allow our plow drivers to get, to do their work, and if you could also just, please, you know, to the extent you can, do your part as well, and when you're out shoveling your sidewalks or walkways, don't forget the, the fire hydrants, too. Super important, it's, it's a really big safety issue, and the last thing we want to have is an accumulation that then freezes over, makes it really difficult, so please, if you could, when you're shoveling, make sure that you take care of those as well. And everyone just be safe, be careful, and just stay warm inside. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the council? Just a couple of things to add. First of all, folks may have seen in their inboxes, our winter newsletter was published last week, week before, I believe, so that's out there. Really great opportunity just to learn more about kind of what's happening in town, what's being worked on at town hall, some information on, for example, the MBTA communities work that's going on, which will be part of town meeting in April, so encourage people to check that out and, and read through there. There is also, I am excited to say, there is a community group here in Wakefield that is looking to organize a porch fest here in Wakefield, and I am super excited about this. I mean, this is a successful event in a lot of other communities, and I, I'm really, you know, kind of excited that, you know, we've got some folks that are really doing some great work, yeoman's work, to start to put this together and to conceptualize what this could be. And so I make that announcement to say that they are looking for volunteers, and so if there's anyone interested in helping to bring this to Wakefield, please feel free to be in touch with me, and I'll connect you to the folks that are working on that. But like I said, I am incredibly excited about that, and I think that'll be a nice addition to our, our bevy of community events that we have. Finally, just want to mention that I do have office hours this week, thankfully not tomorrow, but on Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 at our amazing library, so please come and say hello and check out the great things that our library has to offer while you're there. Mr. Mayo, anything on your end?
No, one thing, just to go on what Council Dabrowski was saying, trash pickup is also delayed a day, just so, won't be any trash, or recycling pickup tomorrow.
Great. All right, item number 15, matters not anticipated for the agenda. Do we have anything from the council for this one? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 16. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Great. Our next meeting will be Monday, February 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM, two weeks from today, so we'll see you then. Please be safe, everyone, and we will take a vote in favor of adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six-zero.